Modalam Samuel, padinara madhikaram, mune rava sanate namadee gavatikukondoruvam.
It is turned to the attention for Samuel chapter sixteen verse three.
And come to see to the sacrifice and I will show thee what thou shalt do and thou shalt anoint unto me him whom I name unto thee.
Eesayai balivirundukka alai payagai, appurudha nee seyyavendhey naan onukarivipen, naan onukusollugiravanai enakaka abishigam bannavaayaagai enrad.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukumai muntavada.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
Indike abishigatte kuri thudana oru teelivana arivai sabai purindukolavendhiyadu avasiyam.
Today is very important for us to understand the church about the anointing.
Avasiyam illama yaari elumbadinya.
And with our urgency don't depart the place.
Ongalene araththi niggal bain padathiga.
Make use of the time.
Abishigam enbadu pudiyarpatte sabaiyundeyapoorunudukaha anupappatta oru deviigasakti.
Anointing is the divine power which is sent to the perfection of the new testament church.
Abishigam entra vaartai palayarpattilum irukkara, pudiyarpattilum irukkara.
The word anointing is found both the new testament and old testament.
Abishigam entra vaartai hindukkulu mattamadathinadu oru ovyoopaduthukaraga.
The word anointing is used by the Hindu religion and other religion.
Anal avargal mattae vikrungangalukka abishigam bannukaraga, anal inge jeevanooda irukkara naam abishigam bannappadukar.
But here they are anointing to the idols but we are anointing to the living one.
Avga vikrungangalukka paala abishigam, neyya abishigam, andha abishigam allampanavu, adu kalukum manukummantra, ananamukka apodi alla, devan nammai unnadathin belathinal, aviinal abishigam bannukar.
They anoint with all milk and oil and anything with the idols for sand and stone and but the Lord is anointing us with great anointing.
Palayarpattabishigathukum, pudiyarpatthabishigathukum, vithyaasam undar.
There is a great difference between the old testament anointing and new testament anointing.
Palayarpattila kathodiyavi aanavrindalaikke padukar, pudiyarpatthla parisuthavi aanavrindalaikke padukar.
In the old testament it is called as the spirit of the Lord but in the new testament it is called as the whole spirit.
Palayarpattile ennain mulamaga, thailat abishigat thailam enkara, thailatin mulamaga abishigam bannappattark.
And through oil, through anointing oil and they were anointed in the old testament.
Enneyo abishigamo illada pachchathil.
And in case if there is no oil and there is, there is anointing oil.
Saalvayathukibodhu abishigam bannappattade naam vedathale parkumudi.
They cast the mantle upon them, they are anointed.
Andha abishigathala anyabase kadayadu.
And there is no unknown tongues in that anointing.
Andha abishigathala oru vallamayaragu.
And the anointing, the power will descend.
Andha vallamayin nirandramayirukkaadu.
And it will not be so permanent.
Teavai podum oludu andha vallamayaragu.
If it is needed, the anoint power will come.
Adu avargale prisitipattavula maathinadeetha, avra parisutham olavula maathavillai.
And that making people so, it will familiar and it not make them to so anointing.
Ovaru sthanathir kaga avargal abishigam bannappattark.
According to the position, they were anointed.
Sengalarthukondrunda oru manidane abishigam bannina boladu, avan asariyana maathappattan.
When the pharaoh was anointed and he will become a priest.
Sengalarthukondrunda vane, ipoladu asariyana devan maathukar.
And one who went to the sea and become the high priest.
Aadumai thukondrunda vane, raja vaka oru maathukar.
And one have become flocking the sheep and become a king.
Yairpooti vivasayam seyyukondrunda vane, tirkadarisiaka abishigam bannukar.
And one was farming the land, had become a prophet.
Kathodiyae sannidhanathile irundhu tuudanai kaapathukaravu naga abishigam bannukar.
One who was found with the presence of the Lord was found as upon his protectors.
Devan thanudiyekumaranaakya kristuvai suviisheshaka naga abishigam bannukar.
And father made his son as an evangelist.
Ipidi ovaru sthanathirukum abishigam andha naatkaliyil teavai paduk.
In those days, the anointing was needed according to the position.
Anabidina tirkadarisi, yappodu oru abishigat thailam enkara oru komby vaitirupar.
So the prophets will have the anointing oil as a home.
Pudiyarpatthla, palayarpattila naa parkumoladu, asariyaru lukku ilavutal ipidi padu oru uuliyam kodukappadundadu.
In old testament, we can see such a ministry was given to the high priest.
Abishigat thailam entru onrayin neerapi eduthu ayyathappaduthavaid.
And you have to prepare an anointing oil.
Adukkina nanna porulkal sharekappadavaid.
And these are the things that be added.
Avasiyam illama, adi cheligiravans kolaisayappadakada.
And without any needer, if it is doing, it should become a murder.
Adu inenna ratiole sharekavaid.
And according to particular ratio, it should be joined.
Adha asariyani apodu vaitirupan.
And priest have to keep this always.
Devuunudiyem manidargundey kaigalay irukku.
And it should be found in the man of God.
Ingene naa parthavodu samuelude kaila indha abishigat thailam andha pupiyale nerappappadundadu.
When we look here, we are able to see in Samuel's hand, the anointing oil was found.
Adathu naa parkumoladu elisa vinkai, kaila andha abishigam irundadu.
That anointing was vested in the hands of Elisa.
Avan thanudiyavelekarnai pathichonan thaila pupiyi nerapi kondupo indu solukar.
And he asked the servant to fill the anointing oil with vessel and go.
Apai ivagilirundanam vellengekoduvadiyana?
What do we understand from this?
Palayarpattlinthabishigam irundadu.
The old testament, the anointing was there.
Avargal vallamayololai marinath.
Had made them powerful.
Simpson melinda vallamay aranginabodhu singathikli pahn.
When the anointing rested upon Samson, he will tore up the line.
Anal avundey tanikpatta valkaila jayam illada.
But there is no overcoming life in this individual life.
Avankanda abishigam varumbadu oru paraakramanaay maaruvaan, mattabadi avayengeyadu pooyavavittleyadu paduthooduvaan.
When the anointing comes, he become a mighty person and he will lead on some other home.
Why? Palayarpattil yedavu ontril purnamirundhal podu.
In old testament, if there is one perfection, there is enough.
Anal pudiyarpatthila apodi alla.
But in new testament, it is not like that.
Ellavatil oru manidhan purnathipetukolav.
And he have to receive perfection in every aspect.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukumai muntavada.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
Naam vedathile parukumoladu.
When we see in the scripture.
Naam sariyana mune rukattabishigathipetukolav.
We have to receive three kinds of anointing.
Indraya message, mune rukattabishigam.
Today's message is three aspects of anointing.
Kathar ungalukuthu thudukudukavirumbukar, adu mune rukattabishigam.
The three stages of anointing.
Nengela abishigam bettavuka da.
We are all anointed.
Pudiyarpatthla ninge ellarume, nengal anyabase pesukirir.
In new testament period, we all speak in unknown tongues.
Anai innikina indha prasangam muruyarudukulla.
Before the preaching gets over.
Indha, indha abishigathra niggal irukkingaradu, niggal analyze panav.
You have to analyze on which anointing you have.
Modala abishigama.
First anointing.
Rendavudabishigama.
A second anointing.
Munaavudabishigam.
A third anointing.
Idhala indha abishigathla irukkingaradu, nengale kadubidikal, andha vasanakal kakkumode, ogalukupurindukun, namayindha erathalukandurukaront, kadubiduchiruv.
While you hear the word of God, you are able to identify in which status you are found.
Adena indike ongalukum mundaavika oru aavila yavapadukar.
I am urged in spirit to present before you.
Nengal vedathile parukumoladu.
When we see in the scripture.
Saulakuri thinegal padithal.
When we read about Saul.
Saul oru visay, oru kattabishigathemattu dan padtha.
And Saul received only one kind of anointing.
Salamuni niggal padithupattal.
When we look into Solomon.
Avani rentrankattabishigathukvandha, anmune runkattabishigathukvaravaid.
He came to the second state of anointing and did not come to the third state.
Anal taavidin valkayipattal.
When we look into the life of David.
Avan mune runkattabishigathukvandhi jaita.
He reached to the third state of anointing and overcome.
Avanki nilayana veedu kattappadu.
And the state of the house was built upon him.
Desam vaakuthatham bannappadu.
And the land was promised for him.
Avanikni nilayana sudandaram kadayadu.
And there was a proper inheritance found to him.
Eetiyan erathal avanukoru pangukaday.
And he received the proper praising him.
Indike namadhey subject, taavidinudiyem mune rukattabishigam.
And today's subject is the three stages of anointing of David.
Palayarpatti, ellame pudiyarpatthinudiyadishtan danga.
And the old testament, anointing and three new testament examples.
Adhe naam sariyana vedathale vellingikolav.
We have to identify in a proper way.
Ingge taavidinudiyabishigathetha naam ipodu paditho.
We are meditate and read about this, the anointing of David.
Taavidinabishigathukum, sauludiyabishigathukarambadifran.
There is a vast difference between the anointing of David and anointing of Saul.
Nengavanada padichupadig.
When we read this.
Onnusamuel padinaru mune rukamipodu.
And we read in Sappho Samuel chapter sixteen verse three.
Naan onakuchollugiravanai enakaka abishigam bannu.
And you have to anoint them that I tell you.
Idhe taavidinudiyabishigam, kathar kaha abishigam bannappattav.
And this was the anointing of David who was anointed for God.
Anal onnusamuel padthamadhikaram modala vasanate parukumoladu.
But when we look into first Samuel chapter ten verse one.
Angesauludiyabishigam cholla padukar.
And here it is mentioned about the anointing of Saul.
Adhe nanna abishigam.
What was that?
Thalayvanaka abishigam.
And he was anointed as a captain.
Adi janathin thalayvanana abishigam, taavidinudiyabishigam, devanukundri valagburiyana abishigam.
And anointing of the Saul is the anointing because a captain for the people but the anointing of David is lived for God.
Nee edakkaga abishigam bannappattan.
For what you are anointed.
Adha neekimukkiyamanu.
And that is very important today.
Onnusamuel onbadu padinaraiparukumoladu.
When we look into first Samuel chapter nine verse sixteen.
Anges kathar samueludhitle modal nalai solivitthar.
And the first day, the Lord mentioned him.
Isravelin adhibidiyaka, avanay abishigam bannu.
And you anoint him as a captain over my people of Israel.
Abishigathronde nokkate niggal purindukol.
And we must identify the purpose of the anointing.
Saulinabishigam, aalugisigara abishigam, taavidinabishigam, kathar kaha valakkudiya abishigam.
Anointing of Saul is to rule over the people but anointing of David is lived for God.
Oru posting kaha avanukabishigam kaday.
The anointing was received to Saul for posting.
Anal adhenkuda avanal kaapatham mudiyaavil.
But he could not able to preserve it.
Adhe yelamdu taavithaan.
He lost it and he was still.
Abishigamu velasindhu, pisasavunukulavelasindhu.
Anointing worked on him as Satan worked on him.
Orayatayathla aavil naravuva, adayatayathla pisasavunukulavaro.
At the same time, he fell in spirit at same time and Satan will enter in him.
Iddinirakuma?
Will it happen?
Namalay alkala orushalallana la anyabase pesukar.
And some of our people used to speak in unknown tongues well.
Kettavartim besukar.
They speak bad words.
Nalla anyabase besukar.
They speak unknown tongues well.
Sandayum porar.
And they quare.
Nalla abishigathraleramburaga.
They speak in unknown tongues well.
Avga aduthavandu sottayaamathar.
And they achieve the positions of others.
Nalla abishigathlaramburaga.
They feel in anointing.
Avangala opuravaga, manikke, sagikke, vinumudiyaavil.
But they could not end you, but they could not reconcile and forgive others.
Idhala irundhe avundiyabishigathintanme, naavellengekodu.
From this, we can identify their aspect of anointing.
Nengal sauludiyabishigatheparukumoladu.
When we look into the anointing of Saul.
Onnusamuel padinata madhikaram padthava sanate parukumoladu.
When we look into first Samuel chapter eighteen verse ten.
Maranolili devanala vidappattakollada avi, saulinmell erangithu, avan veeetirkulay diirkadarisam sollikondirindha.
Nenginthe vasavathal rendu pottan niggal pakala.
We can see two parts in this verse.
Onrude devanala vidappattakollada avi, saulinmell erangithu.
One is the evil spirit from God came upon Saul.
Adhe same time, innoravi velaseyidhithirkadarsinam solikondrun.
At the same time, he prophesies.
Apai enna artho?
What does it mean?
Orayal, oraytime la, aavil narambuva, adutha takkan etthirkasunjala, adhenrathla tensionaiyara.
As same person, as in moment of time, he is filled in spirit and he prophesies.
Ingirukkar, tonnoorvayi ipidi tharikin.
Here ninety percentage of people are found in that sector.
Anayakurudhey valkayipidi tharik.
Many of your life are like that.
Abishigam enbadu onudiyavalkaila oru asayavokudippayo, kalthalulayo, evanayupoi idikaradukaadu kodukappadu sakthi alla.
Anointing is not the power which should be shaken or dashed upon anything.
Onudiyullana manushin belappadumudiyaak kodukappadu oru undu sakthi.
It is a power that is given to the inner man to strengthen.
Anai idhe avasariyana vedathale saul ubayavopaduthavillai.
But Saul did not use in a proper way.
Avanuknada koodenna?
What happened to him?
Abishigathronde adutha steppe avay maaniyindha varla.
The next step with the anointing did not enter in his mind.
Abishigatha avan pudupikavaila.
He did not renew his anointing.
Nekbaranga license pudupikal, pudupikalenna enna narakku?
If they are not renewing their license, what will happen?
Huh? Ilavutal ongaludiyavisaavapudupikalenna enna narakku?
If you do not renew your visa, what will happen?
Ongaludiyapassportapudupikalenna enna narakku, naa ongalidheri.
And you know, if you are not renewing your passport, what will happen?
Adhubala abishigathliyuporu pudidakkudhal irundukiteer.
Likewise, there is a renewed well anointing.
Analaka taavidusolukar, enen puduyeninial abishigam bannukar.
So David say, "Anoint my, the new oil."
Apidi naa avathay solukar.
That's what he used the word.
Thithu mune raiindle parukumoladu.
When we look into Titus chapter three verse five.
Parisutha aviin pudidakkudhalinal namirachittha.
The Lord saved us by the renewing of spirit.
Abo ovurunnaaloo parisuthaaviila oru pudhu anointing ikkul.
Every day, there is a new anointing in the Holy Spirit.
Namakirubayapatti padikira.
We read a study about grace.
Andhakirubayikoda pudiya kirubayirukkar.
And there is a new grace.
Namalgala paadivari, ennekova angana oru kirubayavachitshutideer.
And some are wandering with the old grace that are received.
Expiritedate tanti padichinga.
And they have crossed the expiry date.
Adhurana, andha palayakirubayavachitthu, paattupadhradu, kaitathathradu, allalia podhradu, abiyavodhradu.
With the old grace that they receive, they sing and song and they shout hallelujah.
Endhovur kariyame expiriyagamoladu, adu konjanal ketchati yedha maro, vashamammar.
When a particular thing got expiry and it become a poison later.
Adhubala abishigam kodanisariyayuse panlena, adu onakay kedaammar.
If you do not use the anointing properly, it becomes a treachery for you.
Nigabible niggal padichupadig.
When you look into the Bible.
Abishigam betta oru varshathle, saul andha abishigathayelandha.
And with an anointing, he received one year, he lost the anointing which he received.
Adukperekam opthiti onbadu varshaavu raja vayirundha.
And thereafter, then after thirty nine years, he was a king.
Thirty nine years, avan raja vayirundhalo, abishigam illada oru raja.
And he was the king without anointing for thirty nine years.
Adha avan lifele niggal pakala.
We can see that in his life.
Taavidanai bulavaridideerupan.
And he was chasing David like a dog.
Samayangadakumoladu iti irunjukideerupan.
And he will take the javelin and throw upon him.
Yonathana kettavartela kili kilin kili cha.
And he spoke in evil words with Jonathan.
Kadaisila anjanabakkavana kurisulavana thayidipana.
At last, he was seeking after the magicians and sorcerers.
Abishigathaelakkamoladu narakkara thingukal adhudan.
And these are the evil things when happen, will lose anointing.
Avunudiyabishigam thalayvan, abhibidiyin abishigam.
And the anointing over his head was captain.
Anathaa vidinabishigam apidi padadala.
But the anointing of David was not like that.
Kathar abishigam bannupaday solukar, ivan enakaka abishigam bannu.
When the Lord anointed him, told him, "You're anointed for me."
Indha abishigathavachita, avan enkaka valtrala, enakaka valag.
And he could not live for himself and he have to live for me.
Ippanigaparanga ongabishiganga indhanparanga.
Now you check, what is your anointing?
Ippanigale kadubiduchiruvige.
You have to identify yourself.
Navatthi irukka, paketla irukka illan kadubiduchilla.
Is it found in a packet or not?
Aduthathakana parukumoladu.
When we look next.
Solomon, irandu visay abishigam bannu.
Solomon was anointed twice.
Onnurajakkun, onnamadhikaram, mupthimona vasanate parukumoladu.
When we look into first Kings chapter one verse thirty three.
Ingge modalmodala, avan abishigam bannappadukar, oru soonanayi, oru katralayi naa parukum.
And this is occasion he anointed first time.
Avargal rajadukum mundaavakpravishta podhu, raja avaglinoki, neengal ongal aandavunudiyasevakarekutikondu, enkumaranaakya salamone, enkoveer kardhimelachi, avanikiigunukaradukondupungal.
Opthiti onbadu.
Asariyanaakya sadhokuthailakombay, koodaaratthirundhi eduthukondupoy, salamone abishigam banninath.
Salamone abishigam banninath.
He anointed Solomon.
Modalnavasa vasithavasanam, avanay abishigam bannakutikondupongalindu solukar.
And the first thing is occasion, they are asking to bring this Solomon to anoint.
Renndavudavasanam solukaradu, avanay abishigam banninath.
And the second verse said that they anointed Solomon.
Andha life eppidi irundhi jarima?
And see how was the life?
Avam balisalathina kathar pesuvan.
And when he after sacrifice, the Lord will speak to him.
Avan orunna balisalathidita angiyay padukidha.
He offered a sacrifice and slept there.
Avan aranmanilirundhi gibionlo poy balisalathira.
And he went, came from a palace, took, went to get, get home to.
Ipar raja vamaariach.
Now he became a king.
Analu abishay andhadatla balisalathidide, kathodivittleye kadakara.
Now he offered a sacrifice and stayed in the house of God.
Abishigam narambinavalkay, omvietukonukupoga asavaradu, kathodivittleyirukunna asavaro.
But you feel in the anointing that you receive and he will never allow you to go to your home, it will make you to stay in the house of God.
Agamiyakkooda arangil thanguvadi parkil, umdya aalayithil prakharathil thangum orunalaey sirandadu.
And it was better than a day to stay in house of God, that rather to stay in the other house.
Anan enna narathadu?
But what had happened there?
Andhiravu kathar avunudupesiina.
That night, the Lord communed with him.
Andha abishigathin narevilirundabodhu.
When he was filled with anointing.
Onakenna venunkaerunkar.
And asked what you want.
Avan enne esona?
And he replied.
Andavre, nan chinnapilla enakinyanamtha.
And he told, "I was so angry and give me a wisdom."
Indha abishigam avanay nyanavanai uruvakkin.
And this anointing made him a wise person.
Indha abishigam avanay thalaisarandhavanai maachin.
And this anointing made him a great person.
Avanukumunnalay apidi yaniyavan kadayadu, pinnalayyavaniyavaniyavan kadayadu.
And there is no wise person before and after him.
Appidi padu oru abishigathala avirundha.
And such anointing was rested.
Ipoladu aalayathte kattaharampitavuttha.
Now he started to build up a temple.
Aalay melibikkondhey varukar.
Now the temple started to raise.
Ipoldu narathadu enna?
What had happened then?
Onunnaal agamam.
First chronicles.
Irvaththi onbadhamadhikaram.
Twenty ninth chapter.
Irvaththi irandava sanate parukumoladu.
When we look at the twenty second verse.
Ipoldu rendavisay abishigathukavun varukar.
And he came to the second part of anointing.
Avargal andreyidina migindhasandoshathode, katharkukum mundaavak bojana bana bani, naalidhin kumaranaakya salamone, irandavisay raja vaki.
Yavloberi, avaranubavukkadaadu.
And see how a great experience he received.
Oru visay abishigam bannappattu, ipoladu topla vandach.
Now he anointed once and came to the top position.
Avanukandha abishigathala yavuname yudduthunikumdiya.
And no one can resist against that anointing.
Andha alavabishigam avantalamela vandrich.
And such anointing rested upon his head.
Andha modalkattabishigathala avan oru sariyana neravi petukonda.
And he received the fullness of anointing in the first time.
Vedam enne solukaradu.
What does the scripture say?
Andha abishigathukumunnalay yarame nikumdiya.
And no one can stand before him with that anointing.
Andha abishigam kattacha parake.
After he received that anointing.
Avundyalifee sutthama maripooy.
His life was completely changed.
Avanukke endhavidamana poratumkaday.
And there was no conflict to him.
Onnusam, onnurajakkal, idhamadhikaram, nankavasanate parukumoladu.
When we look into first Kings chapter five verse four.
Analu ippordu endevunaga kathar, engum enakiliparadali tandat, virothiyum illai, idayoorum illai.
Endhaporatumkadayadu.
And there was no conflict for him.
Andha modalabishigam avanukoru sariyana neravi koduthavutthadu.
And the first anointing gave him a fullness.
Ippidumudinju odane, ippa aalayathte kattav readyagara.
After that, he started to build up a temple.
Ippavam mindle, renndavudabishigathukvonnunur asav.
Now he got a desire to come to the second level or second status of anointing.
Ipoldu abishigathil renndavudvisaykvarukar.
And he came to the second time of anointing.
Orutupkara raja vayichilla, tripiyareyadu raja vakkavangla.
And once he became a king, and how it is possible to make him take second time?
Eleksanle jayicha, adutha prudham mudriyavarlak.
When he become, when in election, they can become.
Ivanana raja vayirukkar.
Already he wasn't king.
Thirumavu onarrendavisay raja vakk.
Again, they become a king second time.
Idhe abishigathundre second portion.
And this is the second part of portion of the anointing.
Orushalapillengalas, sunday school padikumodhu abishigam varak.
Some of her children, they receive anointing during sunday school.
Adavachavu valkaila maathamilla, poralavu visuvasiya aruk.
And there is no change in the life and they become an ordinary believer.
Nanmayedu, timayedu, indhalan thirinji, valkaila poratthangala sandikumoladu, indha abishigathayuse ponnunu, atharrendavudabishigam.
To discern the good or bad or evil and when go to the second part of the life and they must need of this anointing.
Abishigathanallayuse ponnunu.
They have to make use of the anointing properly.
Abishigathanam sariyayuse ponnunna, waste.
If you are not using properly, it is waste.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukumai muntavada.
May God's holy name be glorified.
Naanegichonne.
I told you already.
Namadhey sunday school pilligala, nimmasariyavakilenna, yavuna pisasay enkyaavu thalli kondu vaisathruva.
If you do not rope your children, charge sunday school children properly, the Satan may cast them somewhere.
Abishigathla avanadutha steppe kodubodhu.
And you have to take them to the next step of the anointing.
Sunday school padichamattu bodhadi.
It is not enough that you have learnt sunday school.
Centrepai setkamattu bodhadi.
It is not enough they get the center price.
Adhutthav.
It is needed.
Anadhey pillay abishigathla kodubodhu.
At the same time, you have to leave your children in anointing.
Andha pillay adutha erisle mukinara divertpanav.
And you have to divert your children towards jirisina.
Avamelarukkara abishigathapattadu, seyoninabishigana, seyononokki avan divertpanav.
And look into the anointing, what they have, and you have to divert them to the anointing of Zion.
Naanegichonne, inge velulavudachonne.
Already I told, that I told in Velu.
Ippasamivathal oru periyasinima vendhu, revitikarama odhik.
And recently, there was a cinema, it was going Hitler.
Adhalorutha nadigarav.
And there was actor.
Oru famous actor.
And he was a famous actor.
Ongalakallarkundheri, nengal thirtuthanama, andha padhalam patirupi.
And you all know well and you have seen the cinema.
Paajivere vitladi time pass, nee adhatavakadu kancha, time pass onakichabathaladu arukun, methavare TV munnalarukupad.
Your time pass should be in prayer and not in television.
Oru visuvasikindha worldathal entertainment kadayadu.
There is no entertainment, entertainment for a believer.
Ilaiipadunkalam ini, varukarada irukkaradu.
And the coming of the Lord is soon.
Nengipasamivathal padigina, prabhasan oru nadigarav.
And recently, we can see a actor called Prabhas.
Prabhas. Avan andhalala namavisuvasi, sunday school padichapayya.
And he was a believer who learnt sunday school.
Oru time varikam, avan sunday school padichana, avuulyakaradi sondakarapayya.
And to a particular period, he learnt sunday school and he was related to a servant of God.
Avanukandha abishiganga irundichan, thiriyala?
I do not know whether he had that anointing.
But avan adutha steppe deviigathalvarla.
And he did not come to the next step of divinity.
Avan lead pannala.
He was not leader in that way.
Yarleadpantaipo?
Who led him?
Yarkontrolpantaa?
Who controlled him?
Eh? Worldathinadhipadi kontrolpantaa.
The prince of the world controlled him.
Avan thookunduvi engavutthita, Indiaal secondla kodupi utthita.
And he made him to the top, second top position of India.
Nigayosuchupadig.
You'll think and see.
Namadhey valkayipidi iruk.
What hope is our life?
Ongaladhey life, nengasariyabishigathlamaintanpanlan, pisasvoni enkyaakonduvi, padhalathrathukibodupaidu.
If you maintain not your life in a proper way and life Satan may pass you in a bottomless pit.
Idhe unarundhadana, salamone, renndavudabishigathukvara.
And he who examined Solomon came to the second position of the anointing.
Alukkaitruga.
And he asked.
Patruga.
And he has seen.
Avangappavukkadachabishigathala, avapathukadeevan.
And he had seen the anointing with the father received.
Avarku first kadachidu.
And the first time he received.
Second time he received.
Third time he received. He received third time.
Avi cheshtare.
And he conquered.
Yavloporatavunnal, winbandhar.
And he overcome many kinds of conflict and overkill.
Ivam mindle, adutha abishigathukvaru.
So he came to the second step of anointing.
Andha renndavudabishigathukvandha peragu, avan life amaintanpanlan.
After he came to the second step of the anointing, he could not maintain his life.
Kathar unakupanathukodupadu.
God will give you money.
Ah, onakvasidhi kodupadu.
He will give you wealth.
Niadha sariyayuse ponnunna, onavutthupaidu.
If you do not use it properly, it will depart from you.
Onakukodupadu.
He will receive.
Ni sabayathanguvan kodupadu.
And he will give you, that he will sustain the church.
Onmaya irupayanrakodupadu.
Counting you that you are faithful, he will give you.
Kodukarukaridiyarukkar.
He is ready to give you.
Anan niadha yappidi usepuranakaradu, onudiyachay.
And it is your choice how you make use of it.
Anan narandakoodenna?
But what is the treachery happened here?
Renndavudabishigam kadachaparake.
After he received the second anointing.
Avan adhamaintanpanla.
He could not maintain.
Avam mind mudhusum penkelpakkampoits.
His mind is full of to turn towards women.
Adha avundey vilchikicarnamaha.
And this became the reason for the falling.
Sabikulla vandhitthaparake.
After coming to the church.
Anandramillai pennandramillai, cholidhitmaam siguma narakaradukin, indha vasanathae usepanakudara.
And you should not use the verse during the singing, there is no difference between man and woman.
Ellathukoru limitiruk.
There is a limit for everything.
Andha limitliyadan, niggal poogadu.
And you have to maintain in that limit.
Avasiyam illama, vedugalukupogukadu.
And without any needer, you should not go to the house.
Avasiyam illama, vedu sandipukalukkunigal chellakudara.
And without any needer, you should not go for the visiting of house.
Summa, ivandham, pesunam, kaapi kurichenchor, saptham, abrinupogukadu, apriyadavu thavaraana pathakalay, niggal vaitirundhal, niggal thundiikanu illavita, abishigathronde adutha stepukini varammaathai.
If you have any wrong box, you have to disconnect it and you cannot come to the second part of the anointing.
Onnam, rajaakkal, namapadikumodhu.
When we look into kings.
Salamonevalkaila narandhatthingalala.
And what the evil happened in the life of Solomon was dead.
Yappidi renndavisay katharavani raja vaka maathinaro, adhey pola, renndavisay avanay achcharithar.
And how he anointed second time, the same way the Lord warned him second time.
Magane, ni porudhu thavur.
Sir, the path you traverse is wrong.
Magale, ni porudhu thavur.
The path you traverse is wrong.
Onakorusopponakadaikku.
And there will be, there will be vision for you.
Onavudaperyavanga, unakhalosunacholuva.
And greater about you will counsel you.
Thirkadarisana varu.
There will be prophecy.
Prasangasatamari varu.
And there will be message like a vic.
Ulyakarangunakandipanga.
And the servant of God will control you.
Kattpanla, nee renndavudakattathuladu, moondavudakattathukpoomidiya.
If you do not write yourself and you cannot cross the second step.
Onnurajakkal, padinora madhikaram, onbadha vasanate parukumoladu.
When we look into first Kings chapter nine verse eleven.
Renndavisay raja vaka maathappattapidinal, irandavisay avanay achcharikida.
And he became twice, he was anointed, twice he was warned.
Aagyal israveli devanaka, kathar salamonevukku, irandavisay darasana vaki, aniyyadeevagali pinpatthavendam, ente katliyittirundu, avan kathari vittutha, nirvithithirupi.
Padigala? Renndavisay abishigam bannappattan, avanukavaning ethrattavukudukaradu.
How many times he was anointed, he was given warning for how many times?
Nipoladhu sariyilla.
You, the path you traverse is wrong.
Abishigam bannappattavan.
And you were the anointed.
Unde sayalkal, indha ikkamothoradu.
And there is no actions that he was contrary to.
Au solukarari, ellavatthi yum anubavikke, enakadigara undu.
And Paul say, "I have willing to accept everything."
Anan, naa ulyanchigarandhu, ulyathukadu tagdi ayira.
But it is not worthy for the ministry which I do.
Ulakathana, meppidi anubavikala, anan indha markathukadu odavadu.
And we can experience this world in any way but this way it is not, it is in it.
Salamone, third, mune rukattakattukvaravaid.
And Solomon did not come to the third state.
Adhipurukka devanavani nisayarumsthar, orangattarumsthar.
And he started to keep God away.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukumai muntavada.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
Indike namadhey message, taavidum mune rukattabishigam.
Today's message is David and three stages of anointing.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukumai muntavada.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
Ingene naa parukumoladu.
When he comes here.
Onnusamuel padinaru mune rukamipodu, avianavu chollugirar, ni thaila pupiyeduthukondupo, tha eesayin kumaranae oruvanai, enakaka abishigam bannu.
In first Samuel chapter sixteen verse three, the God said of him, "You take the oil of oil and anoint the, see the son of him."
Indha abishigam, ipoladu paninandavasanthalavunmell erangidhar.
Now this anointing is resting upon him in twelfth verse.
Adha paninandavasanthalakathar choladu, ivantha, ivanmell abishigam bannukar.
And he was the one who is anointing.
Padimune rava sanathale thailakombeduthu, avan sagodharar naduville, avan abishigam bannappattan.
And they took the horn of oil and anointed in midst of his brethren.
Adhavirikoru sadarana manushan.
Until now, he was an ordinary person.
Aadum adum, mech, aadu peechikoduthan.
And he was the one flocking the sheep.
Anan innikina narandhaduenna?
But what had happened then?
Avanukoru abishigam kadayadu.
And he received anointing.
Avundey valve, ipoladu tanlavarkaradu.
And his life come to the turning point.
Adhavirikadu, swaramatthalathla, konjanaravastikutupan.
Until now, he used to have a harp.
Aadum mechikutupan.
And he used to flock the sheep.
Idhedha avanukitirinchu uuliyam.
And this was the ministry that is known to him.
Anan innikina narandhaduenna?
And what happened then?
Innikittidiirunna, avanay vedathayadi vande, avanakkuuputthi, samuel, avanay kathar kai, abishigam bannu.
Then suddenly, they sought after him to the home and they anointed for him for God.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukumai muntavada.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
Naipom modalkattabishigathronde, sayalbarugala, ungalukichollagirumbukar.
Now I want to tell the actions of the first stages of anointing.
Nengelarmay, abishigam bannappattavangala, irukkala.
And they all may be anointed one.
Ongal lifele, nenganda abishigathukuparaku, ongal lifee, eppidi niggakondubodhinga, devan eppidi ongalakonduvarar, pisasuvanukalavalkaila, eppidi kurukavandha, olagay eppidi vanduchay, abrinu ongalukthiriy.
After you receive the anointing, you know how it watch path you traverse and what the Lord is leading you and how Satan crossed your way.
Modalabishigam sagodharar naduville, avanukakadaythar.
The first anointing, he received among the brethren.
Veedtilakadach.
And he received in the house.
Avan irundhaveedle, avanukabishigaththayidivandhukadach.
In the house, he received, the anointing came in sort of him.
Ongalakay abishigam kadachay, yavuvaruka.
Can you identify the place where you received anointing?
Abishigam kadachadu, date, yavuvaruka.
Do you remember the day that you received anointing?
Orunnaal oruvitlay, niggalkuukada.
One person, they call him at home.
Nigavitlavirinduchiruk.
And we had a feast at home.
Shapadavanga.
You come and have feast.
Nanjanen, ennatukina.
I asked for what reason?
Yam payya abishigam bettanar.
And this is the date where my son got anointing.
Ipidiyupendi kastlo, oru team irukkandu.
And there is a team in Pentecost like this.
Naga parananal kondathrathil.
And we will not celebrate birthday.
Yam payyanen, neeshithu, kathar abishigam bannanala, thanagani sero, fist vekiro.
And we will conduct feast loving our son and the day we had anointed.
Ongalakay abishigam kadachadu, yavuvaruka.
Do you remember the place where you got anointing?
Endhamarathadile, endha chachile, endha hallle, enthre manikhi, endha erathle, endha soonalile, kathar ungalakabishigam koduthani, yavuvaruka.
Do you remember what occasion and under which tree and what a time, what day you have received the anointing?
Veedtila, sagodharar naduville, avanukabishigam kadach.
And he received the anointing in midst of the brethren in the house.
Avangappavibadithayirundhar.
And father looked at him.
Avan annanallan padithukadeer.
And brothers looked at him.
Ellarukandbuudha, bakkumoladu, abishigat thaila.
When they all looked at him, the horn of honor oil was given upon him.
Kathar ivanay, tanakkandre, abishigam bannup.
The Lord anointed him for himself.
Appidi oru abishigam, avanukakadaythar.
And such anointing he received.
Adhavirikisadarama irundavu rala.
Until then, he was an ordinary one.
Abishigavandha, unna, life.
And when he got this anointing, and when he got this anointing, his life was changed.
Onnusamuel padinaru padinattai parukumoladu.
When we look into first Samuel chapter sixteen verse eighteen.
Oray, andha abishigathlakuthakku oru change.
And there was a great change with the anointing.
Appadhanande velekaranil oruvan pradithramaga, idho betlagamianagi, eesayin kumarana oruvanikandirukre, avan vasipadil thairinavan, avan paraakramasali, yuttaviiran, kariyasamathan, saundhriyamulavan, kathar avunodikoda irukrar enrad.
Abishigam eppidi maathirizhavana padigala?
And see how the anointing changed him.
Avan kariyasamathan.
And he was a cunning in playing.
Avan vasipadil thairinavan.
And he was cunning in playing.
Avan paraakramasali.
And he is a mighty man of valor.
Avan yuttaviiran.
And he is a man of war.
Avan saundhriyamulavan.
And he is a complete person.
Kathar avunodu irukkar.
And the Lord was with him.
Abishigam oruvakulla varumbadu, oor lifele, oru transformation varnu.
When anointing come upon you, there should be transformation in your life.
Oru maru roomavarunnu.
There should be transformation in your life.
Idhu saulukulla ahamatthala narandhadu.
And this happened in the life of Saul in the beginning.
Onnusamuel padthamadhikar, niggal parukumoladu.
When we look into first Samuel chapter ten.
Indha abishigathukadaythapodhu.
When he received this anointing.
Onnusamuel padthu arle parukumoladu.
When we look into first Samuel chapter ten verse six.
Appadhan kathroode avi unmell erangava, ni avargalodikooda diirkadarisam soli, vera manushana vay.
Modalabishigav saulai vera manushanai maathith.
The first verse, anointing of the Saul made him a different, entered a different person.
Onnusamuel padthamadhikaram, onbadha vasanam.
First Samuel chapter ten verse nine.
Avan samuelivittupogumadi thiruminapodhu, devan avunukaverae irudayatikodutha.
Modalabishigathle, saulukaverae irudayam kadayadu, vera manushanai, avan marinana.
In the first anointing with Saul received, he became another person and another heart was given to him.
Anan enna onukupuriilio, illa thiriyilio, onukupadam thiriyadu nal, seconduke pohamavut.
But he could not identify, could not understand, so he could not enter to the second step.
Namachil, namapilligala padigina, orushalallana, primary schoolle, nipadhiranga.
When we see some of the children, they were stopped or seized in a primary school.
Abidina oruvav. Abidina ethna? Primary schoolna ethna adha? Anji variki.
Till fifth standard.
Adhut midle.
Then middle school.
Adhiyattu.
Till eighth standard.
Adhurana? Adhut? Cholunga? Eh? High school.
High school.
Adhiyattu.
Higher secondary plus one plus two.
And higher secondary. Nee enganipadirukkant thiriyenake.
And higher secondary plus one plus two, then after college.
Enganipadirukinga?
Did you stop your anointing in a primary state? And one who stopped the anointing in primary level, he is called Saul. And he was stopped there and he wanted to reach until the suicide point. How was our life today? You have to analyze yourself in what stage you are. May the God's holy name be glorified. This first anointing made David a mighty man of valor, a comely person and cunning in playing. When we look unto first Samuel chapter seventeen, verse thirty four. He said so, after I received anointing, how I was. After you see anointing, you overcome a prevail over the line. And you overcome this. After you see anointing, you have the power to resist against the devil. And you have to resist the evil powers. The first state of the anointing is resist against the Satan. You have to tear the line. And tear the bear. And you will become a divine one. What is the meaning cunning in playing? Not playing only guitar? And afterwards you will have attention towards the Bible more. And you have to meditate and analyze the word of God, there is eternal life. May the God's holy name be glorified. When he was stood and anointing, there was many conflict found. And he was a new one anointing. And he received the new anointing, he could not maintain his life properly. In the beginning, we received anointing, we did not know what to do. Unknowingly, we have lost a grace many ways. And I also counted laws many times. And they used to say about the teachers that one who were not born in spirit and water, he could not reach the kingdom of heaven and they did not tell about their anointing. And this anointing is there. And with this anointing, he slain Goliat. And this anointing is making a ruler. And with this first anointing, he slain Goliat in a single beat. And before that, he could not beat anyone properly. How many stones he took? And he took five stones. And this anointing made him to beat in a single beat. If your anointing is proper, within a single beat, you will prevail over the Satan. And see the how and how has changed his life. And he was, one who was flocking the sheep. And one who was staring the line. And one who prevailed over the bear. And his duty was over. Now he came to the battlefield. Now he came to the battlefield and overtook Goliat. Now he overtook Goliat. Now where he gone? And there is no work to flock the sheep and he came to the palace. And this was a tragedy happened to him here. And what was the posting he received when he slain Goliat? After you receive children, you will get the job, you will get marriage and you will get children, everything and wealth, everything. And after that, you will go to the next place. And after you receive anointing, everything will be given to you. And one who was called for the marriage, priest and said so. And when he was called for the marriage and after he will go on for the feast. Your mind was gone to a different level. And he said so, and I've got new building a house, I will not come. And I said, I got a new car, I will go after it. After you receive anointing, the Lord will give you the fullness of blessings and wealth and everything to your deliverance, but you should not keep your eye after it. After he received the anointing and he was not looking towards the bear or liner, and when he slain the Goliat and his attention turned towards the palace. After he received the anointing and he was went up to the palace and gives attention paid towards the Micah. And Micah loved Saul. And Satan will look unto you what you love most. And we can see in the Bible, Micah and David loved each other and Saul looked unto him and he wanted to defeat David in this way. And according to that, he married and settled in his life. How many days? How many days he stayed there? When Saul heard that he was in the house and he wanted to kill him on that day itself. And from that day, he completely forgot to Micah. And what you love most and with that, the love Satan become and attack you. After you receive anointing, if you are paying attention or contrary to the word of God and love of God and to the met word of God and it became a snide for you. So and after he getting some wealth and possessions and his strange mind was changed a little bit. And one who received a car newly and he used attention has paid only towards the car and not towards the word of God and Bible reading. How you have to read? He came to the battlefield. And he taken all this milk house and apples and came to the battlefield. He could not find his brother. When there was an announcement, declaration said about who overcome Goliat and the daughter of king will be given a son-in-law to him and with looking into this, he was forget the brother. And he called the brother. And when the one person was replied unto him and one was slaying or defeating Goliat and will be given as a palace for him and possessions will be given to him. And while speaking, who came there? My brother came there. Why did you come here? Why, who asked to come here? Did you flee away all the flame? And he scolded at him. And he was scolded and he was just making a round there. If I kill him, what will he get? His mind gone there. Where your mind was diverted, his mind was diverted to the marriage and the possessions and the things of the world and somehow the Satan is diverting your mind. But what had happened then? And through anointing, he received somewhat victory, but because of the wife, he was roaming around the wilderness. What happened next? And who was with him? And we can see the team which is found in first Samuel chapter twenty-two, verse two. And he should be found in the palace, but he was found with the person who were distressed and discontented and one who were murmuring. Twenty-one thirteen of first Samuel. And we can see that David was found and changed his behavior before them feigned himself in mad and spittle fall upon. If you make use of anointing not in a proper way, it makes you mad. If you stay not in a proper place and you will become a friendly with the distressed person and the discontented and one who is dead. Now the anointing was there. Now he lying. When we look unto first Samuel chapter twenty-one, verse two. And the priest asked unto him, why did you come alone? And he said so, a business of king I come here. How presumptuously you are telling lie to your servant of God? You have anointing. And you were the son-in-law of a king and why did you come alone? He said, because of king's business, I have come alone. The business of kings, so haste, I have come alone. Many of believers are lying this way. What happened then? And if you are not anointing the anointing properly and you will not get the full and shelter. When we look unto first Samuel chapter three, verse eight. And he could not get even a single time of meal and he looking at the priest for a bread. And he had to take this sword in his hand. Now he said, there is no weapon in my hand. And if you are not using the anointing properly, you will become the person without any weapon. If you are a man of war, you must have the sword always in your hand. If you do not have a sword in your hands and the devil will overcome you. Now you were begging to the man's hand. I need money. I need this. I need that. Why? You are the anointed one. You ask unto God. Why you want to ask unto man? You had anointing. Even so, you would look like David, you did not maintain the anointing properly. Now you desire to eat, you could not eat. When we look unto first Samuel chapter twenty-five, verse eight. And you were saluting to the man and was asking him to give something to him. And he that will be faithful upon God will prosper. And going, you know, don't have anything. You are the anointed one. You are the blessed one. You are rich in anointing, why you want to beg to others? And why you came to the state that you want to beg to others? When the servants of God visit your home and you should have, you should not come and ask to beg to others' house and give them. And you should not argue the debt from other friends and should give. If you have coffee, you can give. If you have nothing, you give water. And if you have better time, you can give something to them. And without money, you should not receive debts and give to them. You say so that if you give only offering will be blessed and you do not have anything, why you should have to give? And you should not ask a ounce to the other one. It may be a Muslim house and what they think about it. It may be a Hindu house and what they think about it. And they may believe her what they think about you. Why I said this? Once I went to the company for a prayer. And there is a four companies in a single branch. And one division in one part. One is computer division. And another is printing division. And the new building division. In a single building, there is different parts. And they mind their own business and they go. I went to pray in a single building. I prayed. And one believer, he was found individually, he called for a prayer. I went there. When you look unto that time. The next, the building was about Hindu. And one who was having rent and a pen in the printing area, he made all the banana sleeves and played there. I prayed for that division. And the believer who was carrying the Bible, one who celebrated the Bhadavajja, he asked money to him. What he think about us? They think about us that and with pastor come, they have to give money, certainly so he gave the money to him. I am not mocking, you have to meditate. If you want to give money, you must ask, you must have money at all the time. Pastor Joel used to tell. In the ark of the Nova, all the creatures of the world were in fear. Now they opened the door. And everyone went outside. But even. But. But what, what found in the Nova's hand? And he had an offering to give, a sacrifice to God. And he offered a sacrifice and lots of money to the sweet swelling sable. And two of them were seeking after the ash. One was Saul and a servant. And they sought after for a long distance. At last, the son of God said so, if they tell about the ash, they said the story. And the Saul had said that if we were looking after the man. And the servant of Saul said so, I have, I will give. And even if you do not have. The Lord look unto your emptiness. The Lord visit you and he will come and give you an abundance. You must stay on knees, I don't have power to give to the place I have given and the Lord will come and bless you. And the Lord will bless you that you. I visited the place on way. And there was no man to make me to sit there. And there was no man to sit. And there was no man to kneel down on frame. It was such a house. There was no fan. And it was an upper chamber with as best seat. I prayed there and came. I transferred to some other place. Then I become preacher and went to the convention. And I looked there. They introduced one person. I inquired about him. And he has spent eighteen lakhs of money for the convention. And he said so, you don't want to spend any kind of spending. And he was an important person in the church. And past Wesley dedicated his house. When I inquired at him and he was the one who did not have mats to spread on. You think and see. And the Lord who gives will give in abundance. And the Lord who gives will give in abundance. You have to believe. And with anointing you have, you should not beg hands to others. And you should not beg hands to others. When we look until first Samuel chapter seventeen verse twenty-eight. And all the brother hated him. May the God's holy name be glorified. I tell you about the folding and raising up of the first state of anointing. And one part, he is throwing up the line and beard and going out. But he could not maintain it properly, so like an animal, he was going upon the forest in the wilderness. And Saul is ready to somehow defeat him. Glory be to the God's holy name. When the days have passed. The Lord took him to the second state of anointing. Second Samuel. Second chapter. Fourth verse. And second part of anointing. And David was anointed twice, second time. And this is the kingly anointing. It is not among the brethren. And we look into second chapter first verse, I received the anointing, hey, Bronn. And this is the anointing which is given upon David over the house of Judah. After you receive anointing, you are not a king. And you are sitting in that posting. He received the anointing. He roomed somewhere. And second time he received the anointing. Look properly, he become the king over house of Judah. How many tribes were there? There were twelve tribes. Only in the tribe of Judah, he received the anointing. How many days he stood there? When we look into second Samuel chapter three. When we look into fifth chapter. Seven years, six months of time, he was a king. Five, five of second Samuel. And he received the second part of anointing and hid right over the Judah for seven and a half years. When we tell Ebron, it is a unity of the fellowship. It shows the church. When we tell Judah, it is praise. The second position or second part of the status of anointing will make you the person who prays God and pray over you. What does the goodness we receive from this? Second Samuel chapter three verse one. This anointing will make you stronger. It make you to prosper your family. As the individual, a personal person, you will become a king. Now, all your labor of your hands will be blessed. All the days he come past will be stronger, your family will prosper. And some of the things you have an overcoming life. Listen properly. When we come to the second level of anointing, there is an overcoming life. Until then, he did not have the overcoming life. Now his victorious life begin. Not upon everything. Only upon one tribe, there is only one part he is having the overcoming life. In your family life, there is a victory. In your victory in business. Now he is a king. For seven and a half years, he was running. In which state is of anointing you are, you identify yourself. Is it in second level of anointing? And seven and a half years is break there. What happened there? When we look into the outer confession, it was amazing. Second Samuel chapter three verse thirty-nine. And this is the confession which comes out of his mouth in the second level of anointing. You have to visit the problems properly, you must ask properly. You must ask it properly. If you have any doubts after the meeting, you can ask me. The first level of anointing made him to cross the particular limit and we can see some of the failures in his personal life. In second level of anointing and he have made failures in his spiritual life. On one part, the victorious life begin. And he came in his prayer time and was praying for a long time. And when he come, he becomes stronger and stronger. And his family was prospering. And it was going in a particular style. When we called the David, he is a king. Until then, he was not receiving the name called. Now, he was resting with the kingly anointing. But only one tribe, he got victory. Yet he have eleven tribes and it is not coming under his control. And seven and a half years, he was striving. And seven and a half years rested in that anointing. Until even I was anointed as a king, I am, I am weak in this day. What was the reason? The reason is the sons of Zeruya were too hard for me. And he could say able to win over the Saul, but he is not able to win over the sons of Zeruya. In second Samuel chapter three verse one, he overcome Saul. The same chapter, the last verse, he was getting defeated with the sons of Zeruya. In some things you got victory and some of things you fail, fail here. Who was the sons of Zeruya? One is Joab. And second is Abisham. And third is Hesekiel. These three are the sons of Zeruya and said, so they are stronger than me. These three are three different characters. And one is a revenge. And one is not able to sustain him. And one is adamant. And these three overtook him. When we read in Bible. When we look into second Samuel chapter three verse twenty-seven. And because of brother and Joab, they made him to. Sixteen nineteen of second Samuel. When Abishay was spoke by someone, he could not contain it. Two twenty-one of second Samuel. And we can see the added nature of Hesekiel. These three are different characters. And Joab could not control without revenging others. Abishay could get the beating, but he could not speak of others. How you are? And some, they used to say, if they shame before others, they could not control themselves. A Banglour mother used to testify that I am a dust, I am dung, I am nothing. Whenever she testified, praise the Lord, I am dust and dung. And this is a habit for her. And they called at her, the dust and dung was going. And others said that I was not dust, I was dung. And she said, so what you teach in the Sunday school and they call me as a dust and dung and you says like they testifying and they are calling you this way. And what you said was true. When other call you, it was dust and you have to remain silent. And you must say hallelujah. And you must say, is I am a dust. And some could not contain the words and they make a tension. And that was Abishay. One person mocked at David and he said, so why you remain silent? And David was making a profession that these three sons are overcoming me. Or you like that? Even you feel an anointing or you having the spirit of taking vengeance? And even someone is speaking against you, take fasting for three days or you praying and pray, praise the Lord? Are you having the adamant nature? You may come to the second step of anointing. In some certain things, you might have received the overcoming nature. But the Bible say you must receive the entire overcoming. When you look this. And this is the second level of anointing. When we look into the same second chapter seven five. This is the third level of anointing upon Israel. What does it mean? And he became the king over Israel. He was anointed over all Israel and he become the king of all, able to control over all tribes. And this is the third level of anointing. Step by step, he is coming up. And there was trembling in his way. Failures. And cried. And first. And he is getting beaten. Even so, he was coming to the next step of anointing. And this is the third level of anointing. In the third level of anointing, he sustained and stood there till the end of his life. How many years? The entire perfection of life for thirty-three and a half years. And thirty-three years and he was a king over all Israel and Jude and Jerusalem. And this is the perfection in his life. How many are able to change like that? May the God's holy name be glorified. After he received the third level of anointing, there was a total change in his life. In one part, he received failure. And the Lord is giving him judgment. But he still is not leaving him. When you get beating, I used to say, my grace of God is forever for me. And the Lord beat him nightly. Three days, seven days, he will not eat and he remains silent. And he said, so son was dead. And he said, in the mercy of the Lord, you have the Lord ended it forever. Falling upon the feet of him and he was reached with the third level of anointing. In what state of anointing you have? When you come to the third level of anointing, what will happen? He come to the third level of anointing in second Samuel chapter four, fifth verse. What happened there? Five, seven of second Samuel. David took the stronghold of Zion. When did he took? First level of anointing, he do not know what is Zion. In second level of anointing, who do not know where is Zion? When he took the third level of anointing, he went to this stronghold of Zion. And no believer, no servant of God can receive the Zion and New Jerusalem simultaneously and without receiving the third state of anointing. And no done properly and no servant of God reach Zion and no believer can reach Jerusalem even if they receive the third level of anointing. Anointing will take you to Zion. Anointing will take you to New Jerusalem. Anointing will not leave in the halfway. You must come to the next step. That's what we come to tarry meeting every week. So we are giving the worship session in the tarrying meeting and a Bible study. This anointing was still in you forever. Seven and a half years in one tribe and all over Israel for thirty-three years, he was a king. Overall Israel, I will take a speaks about the subject in your Wednesday. If you have interest, you come. Most of the believers are not coming for the Bible study. And it's some way you have come here today. They remember that it was Sunday today. One, he took the stronghold of Zion. Second. The first part of the third level of anointing, you must become the person of the kingdom of heaven. Second, second Samuel chapter five verse seventeen. And when they received the first level of anointing, no one came after him, but when he received the anointing over all Israel and he became. When you receive the third level of anointing, Satan will come against you. When Jesus was born, he came to make him to. And you just baptized, you came to tempt him. And he said, so the prince of the world come unto me, that things of the world thing was not unto me. In every state, Satan will come to you. Not only the thing that you receive on a baptism, he will come unto you when he received the third state of anointing, he came unto him. What he did so? And beautifully, he went to the place was safe and he went there. The third level of anointing will preserve you in his stance. And the Lord will keep you in his stance in the days of evil. And he went to the safest place. And the name of the Lord is a strong tower and he is a refuge for me. And you have to refuge yourself. And it is not needed for you to fight. You have to cover yourself. And he, the dweller of the hell, Almighty, the most high, he will stay in the Almighty. The third level of anointing will take you to Zion and New Jerusalem and it will make you a person and a strong tower, a righteous run to it. The third part of the third state of anointing. When we look into second Samuel chapter five. And these enemies started resisting against David. What happened there? And he discovered the Satan and the enemies that brought him around it. When we look into second Samuel chapter five verse twenty. In that place, it is called the Baal Perazim. And we can see. And it is mentioned here as a name called the Baal Perazim and they make it broken upon the enemies before me as a breach of waters. And what are the things you feared about and all the powers will be scattered. To watch with powers, you were scattered and you were trembled around, the Lord will scatter under all these powers. The other super point was. When the third anointing comes. The ark will come unto you. When we look into second Samuel chapter six. And David brought the ark of God to his house. Twelfth verse. When you bring the ark to the house and the Lord will give you all the talents and gifts and give you, and give back the ark unto you. And such a glorious experience will come unto you. The Lord will make your life a shining bright day. And don't think about the thing which you have lost and he will give you a double food. Once again, you will resist against the table. Once again, we stand in the gap. Once again, you will raise a zeal for God. All your calling and your gifts are done changing. You are believing the ark is coming unto you again. And you have to step into the third level of anointing. After that, the next level is he wants to build the temple of God. What had a desire for him? He want to build the temple. I want to see God. Until I received the habitation of dwelling for Jacob, I do not want to sleep as slumber to my eyelids. We will look on Two, Second Samuel, chapter seven, verse two. Somehow I have to build the temple. I am in the wife's house. And it has found the sedatory. I built a temple for a house of God. I want to see the dwelling of God. In Second Sam, seven thirty-two, we can see, and I will not come into the tap in a clock in my house, I will not sleep to my eyes and I slumber to my eyelids. What was your today now? You are the temple of God. The temple of God is holy. When you come to the third level of anointing, you will think more about your life. Until now, you have problem of your money. And if you receive the third level of anointing, you will have the problems of your family, your children and what you provide and your possessions and job, I will receive the anointing and you will think about more, have to see about God and seek after the things of the Lord. His intentions and thoughts are about the temple of God. His intention about the temple of God. When he tell about temple. And he said, "So now Moses had a pattern of building a temple and he have given the pattern in my hands." And such a pattern was given, delivered in my hands. And simply or ordinarily, I did not come to this temple. First, first chronicle, chapter twenty-eight, verse ninety. Until you make this temple of God as a holy, the God's written Bible is vested in your hands. And David said, "So the Lord made me understanding my writing given upon my hands." Your life and my life to be built up, the God's Bible was given to everybody in our hands. One is the anointing of Zion, it comes, the third level of anointing comes, you become a Zion and you Jerusalem. Any powers may come against you, but you will go to the refused place and you will protect yourself. Any kind of battle become against you, you will conquer. Fourthly, the ark will return unto you. All your intention, thoughts and desires and all your slumber and sleep will be somehow you want to build the temple of God. And such intentions and thoughts will come to you. In one state, you may have other holy things, but now when you close your eyes, I have reached unto heaven that your thoughts. And that is the third level of anointing. Let us all close our eyes. If possible, bend your knees. And what kind of anointing you have and what is the state of your anointing? And Lord want to deal with you. Now, the word of God was hearkened in your both ears. I give you some of time. You will just check yourself, what condition of anointing you have. Are you Saul? Are you Solomon? Are you David? First anointing. Second level of anointing. A third level of anointing. I gave you many evidence to the word of God to identify yourself in what state of anointing you rest. Perhaps. You may be without anointing, ask unto God, "Give me anointing." For many years, you may be without anointing and you stay in the first level of anointing, ask for the second level of anointing, I want to begin my victorious life. I want to do a overcoming life beginning in me. Or I am tarrying for the Lord to give me the third level of anointing. It is enough for me to strive for well and I want to become a overcomer. I want to become a overcomer in all kinds of places. I want to overcome those love against me. When we get this mind. Your Zion, your Jerusalem will come before you. Any power may come against you, but you will rescue yourself. And any kind of battle become, you will conquer. And the Lord, all that you have lost will come seek after you. Grace, gifts and talents will seek after you. All your thoughts become built in the temple of God. All your thoughts and mind become their holiness. And you will consecrate yourself for holiness. And you will cry for holiness. You will empty yourself for holiness. You will consecrate your sleep and slumber for holiness. And your bed will be consecrated for holiness. I want to see the dwelling of Lord of Jacob. Your child of God. What anointing you have and rests upon you? Those who want to raise up your hands. I stay in second level of anointing, I was having a just overcoming life, I was an angel, I was a adamant nature, those who say, "Raise up your hands." Dear the believer, don't stay in this. And it was in the day, but still see the seven and a half years. And God want to become a king all over Israel. The reason for you to call him yourself, you must become a overcomer. And the plan of God concerning you in his mind is you become an entire overcomer. And how many have this hope? How many of you have this belief? A question. And those who say that I am on the third level of anointing for the closure of this meeting, let us come to that stage. And lift up your right hand. Lord, if it is true that you have given the third state of anointing to David, you give to me also. If you read about Jesus, you will be shocked and amazed. And there is anointing in his birth. In his growth, there is anointing. In baptism, there is anointing. Anointing in his ministry. After he was dead, there was anointing. There is anointing of Zion. How many decide for the third level of anointing? Those persons lift up your right hand. If you asked only for this five experience, the third level of anointing will come and rest upon you. The sign and symbol of the anointing rest upon you is you will become a Zion and a Jerusalem. And you will become a new Jerusalem, which was adored and is a bride. You will be escaped from the old slayer of the enemy. All the battle you will face anymore will become a conqueror for you. What you lost will come back unto you. All your mind will be holiness. The purpose of the message, I have urging to speak about this verse today. And if I had such a conflict and how a conflict the Lord may have. And the Lord of coming amidst to take other people to the third state of anointing. I had a desire. I want to see the person those who are going to receive the third level of anointing. This anointing, this in the midst, if you are receiving, you are blessed. And this meeting will extend, will follow in this for ten minutes. Without receiving the fifth state of, the third state of anointing, no servant of God. A believer should not depart from this place and without receiving the third level of anointing. Strive with him. Do not leave him. You hold him. You just pour upon the head of my oil that you are oiling the my noses. Lord Jesus poured upon my head. If it is true that Lord have given the three, the third level of anointing as a message for you. If it is true that it is needed for you, the Lord had sent that word to you. I believe. The Lord should stand in our midst with a wile of oil in his hands. Don't allow him to cross over you. Let him pour upon your head. Let him pour upon the anointing oil upon your head. Hallelujah, ooh. Ooh. Hallelujah, rabakathu, dabakathu, dabaniya. Hallelujah, rabakathu, dabakathu, dabaniya. If it is true that Lord have given the three, the third level of anointing as a message for you. If it is true that it is needed for you, the Lord had sent that word to you. I believe. The Lord should stand in our midst with a wile of oil in his hands. Don't allow him to cross over you. Let him pour upon your head. Let him pour upon the anointing oil upon your head. You may be a old believer. You may be the servant of God, want to do something for God. You may be a sick. You may be the weak. You may be with many kind of faithless. You may be any kind of person. Without this anointing, you cannot become all overcomer. Once you surrendered unto him. At least you surrendered the word unto word he appeared unto him. You can pray this way. If it is true that there is a third level of anointing, let it come upon me. A Muslim went to a meeting. In that meeting, Jesus came as a light was preached. He asked. Is there any power which is most significant, let it come upon me. And rightly, a light come upon him and thrown him away. And he stumbled and stood up. And before he asked such pass, he came upon me. I am standing steadily. If it is true, the God is Jesus, let the light come upon me. Before the word was ended and the light touched him. He fell down. And it was shame for him. Too light, it is more than Allah, the true Jesus and it came upon our hands. I ask a question now. I am a great drunkard. If the power of Jesus is the true light and it come and touch me, I'll give a deliverance. The next second, the changing power of the true Jesus came upon him. And the drunken, the drunken spirit left him. Now, he was doing the service for God. Are you believing? If it is true that third level of anointing is true. Bend your knees. And without this anointing, there is no use of living. And there is no use of anointing without this anointing. And without anointing, there is no use of coming to this church. Lord pour upon me. Lord sanctify my heart. Lord change me through anointing. All young boys and girls, bend your knees and stand. All stand on knees. Wherever you are, stand on. Wherever you are, stand on knees. All Sunday school teachers stand on knees. And Lord is going to seal you today. And you will see the wonders which begin in your life. The miracles will begin through you. It is for the sake of your eyes. Now, the anointing is coming to send the promise. With that anointing, depart from this place and you will become a victorious person. No one will crown you victory through you. Do not feel same. Do not control yourself. Do not feel shame. Spirit of God and let lift this banner upon you. Amen. Taking the anointing oil, Samuel tarred in that house. First person, king. And he was started to pour it upon head. And Lord said to stop. I am not the Lord looking into face. I am looking into the heart. He is not the person. And second person also not anointing. And one by one, they were going. And still there is no child. There is one person. Until he comes, I never pour anointing upon. The meeting is extending for a single person. My child, the Lord have come, the anointing for you. The anointing is waiting only for you. Lord pour upon me. If you are David, the anointing is for you.
Prasutam, thomlaan nallaa andavari, indhaa aashruthi kibita daanamda maymin samuthu kaanindiyoodum isthothirikiranga thaave. Adiyareka thaave kandhamaram laanirinle kanmani valpaadugathu. Indhaa varakken vannal kaalavalile aviyavudum meedhu umda samuthal aaradike. Umda parasutha samuthukku kundunduppi naal nandhiyoodum isthothirikaram. Kathirla maygila, kathirla kaligura, aviyanaal nerappappada umda varthaili kettke, kathirangala podisidhi kaanindiyoodum isthothirikaram. Umda samuthal orumda laanirinle aashruthi kerevarai, veeepi kerevaraga. Indhaa athmaavai teetchi kerevaraga. Umda varthinal engal teetchi kerevarai, veeepi keredevi ma sakyavasanathakunengal veeepi keredevi naadukkadee rakaanindiyoodum isthothirikaram. Aviyanavari, indhaa raande, oorpothali, neenadhyaa ashritaviklaaki tandharedu kaagam gathothraa andavari. Kathadi aviyanavari, indha kaalavalile enguda, nirinle odhu peesannadaan, dajiva varthaili kaanindiyoodum isthothirikiranga thaave. Andavari, naagalu enguda rajaakala marumidiyake, engal enguda, andavari, engal abushayagamanirkiriraa andavari. Indhaabushayagathu enguda naagalu enguda kaathukkala naalkilengalikkunni udeshimidiyake venditlera gaththaave. Andavari, imga stothraa sahulai, andavari, gaththaave, avanna orumre rajaavaka abushayagamaniniraa andavari. Saamu gaththaave, andavari, salamonirindukara neeraavanna abushayagamaniniraa andavari. Avanna andabushayagathain raja mainmiam kaathukkala vleekaththaave. Thavide, muntu velen neeraabushayagamaniniraa andavari. Gaththaave, avanna sagodaran naduvale neeraabushayagamaniniraa andavari. Avanna yuttavirenai irundaan andavari. Avanna kaariyasa matthanai, putti saliyarindu vala, naagalu enguda gaththaavuttavirenai, kaariyasa matthanai, puttimangala. Naagalu enguda narandavula engalikkunni udeshimidiyake venditlera gaththaave. Neerithaavide, abushayagamaninidu vala, engal enguda abushayathirikirira andavari. Ndaabushayagathan naangal kaathukkala udeshim. Andasankathaave, thavide, andavari, selakalamgal andavari, ndabushayathukke, andavari, eda ngudamal palanalkalagat, maligalilun, andavari, meedugalilun gaththaave, andavari. Andavari, vananatharitthalavu narandhitthirundan andavari. Neerumunngaritthi devan abushayagamaninidhanan devan thirbom gaththaave. Thirbom maavunna renduva seenee, gaththaavu rendaavu seenee neeraabushayagamaniniraa andavari. Andavari, avanna varavu gaththaavi singkar, andavari, avannakurodhamake, israel kudumathukurodham, yudha janathukurodhamake, andavari, yuttam balaththa andavari. Thavide varavara balathanandha naangal ketam andavari. Naagalu enguda varavara balatharapalathavula, abushayathkaathukkalarula, abushayathaputipikkaramala, wallamai puttipikkaramanshaada naangal kaanappadengal kudiyudeshim gaththaave. Avanna mundaamariyake gaththaave, abushayagamanappattan andavari. Avanna mundaamariyake abushayagamanappattubulidhagaththaave, sagale israel jannakkaavunna rajaavaka abushayagamanappattan andavari. Avanna abushayathka putipittukundu, andavari, avanna gaththaavushayathanal nirindavanai, amda raja baranpaninana andavari. Aduvala naagalu enguda gaththaave, ndabushayathkaathukkalingal kudeshim gaththaave. Avanna abushayathanal, avanna CEON kattai piddithaan andavari. CEON kattai gaththaavu piddithakaththaave, amda rajaavaka, andavari, thirbom maathanandha abushayathen, CEON in abushayathen, eresalem in abushayathen padugathukundu vala. Naagalu enguda CEON kottai piddike udeshi engal kurodhamayidumara, skurudharan saparumantha avigala jayke, engal enguda wallamai abushayagandandhagaththaave. Naagalu enguda CEONai eresalem amharappada, ndaCEON abushayathanal nerappappadala kaanappadavudeshim gaththaave. Amna rajaavaka abushayagamaninanaalendu, belishter keluppattuvala avunkurodhamai vandharla andavari. Analamavanna aranipanidaththalavanna irundaan andavari. Aduvala naagalu enguda aranipanidaththal kaankaapadengal kudeshimidiyake vendiklaro. Andavari, nithinga naalile engada, tamda kodharaththam maravale maraththi kaankaade devan, engal enga padukaavallamila devan arikirirakkaanindiyoodum isthothirikiranga thaave. Aviyanavari, imga stothirangathaave, avanna gaththaave, andavari, avannakurodhamai, satharkai vandhavada, satharkalai kanniir udainthu oodukaridu vala avanna jay, gaththaavanna yuttamani belishtare jaythan. Aduvala naagalu engal engal kurgara sathurai, andavari, abushayathanal irapil jayke engal engu kurgatharmidiyake venditlera gaththaave. Andavari, avanna satharkalai jaythu, andavari, devan samuthalidhu vala gaththaave, avanna gaththaavudanpadi kapitthirbomai, andavari, thandavitu kundundu vala gaththaave. Naagalu enguda udonpadike, naangal putipittukundu, naangal udonpadike pattiela irkara, naangal enguda, nda parasutha thapadugathukkalingal kudeshimidiyake venditlera gaththaave. Avanna gaththaave, andavari, devan, aalaittha kattumidiyakanavangi avannakula vandhathagaththaave. Andavari, naagalu enguda oorvarum, naangal devan aalaimai irkara andavari. Neengal devan aalaimandha solipattukka gaththaave, naangal aalaimai marumidiyake, engal aalaitthirkiriraa andavari. Indhaa aalaittha parasutha aalaima naangal padugathukundu, andavari, neeripovunda almasandike engal padugathukkalmidiyake avushayathka putipittukundu, indhaabushayathka belappadukundagaththaave. Engal kurodhamai varugara sathurai naangal jaythu, jayaaligala thavide polagaththaave. Andavari, jayaaligala mar, yappadiyadugaththaave, rajaadi rajaamasandike, ndabushayathai, indha prateshain, indha thirmanagal, illavachipadugathukundagaththaave. Missandike engal aytamakumidiyake vendiklaro. Ketta ranaadavathramidji vittabarsuthavakappadu, indha rajaadi rajaavasandike thaidipadukumidiyake vendiklaro. Indha raja mainmiam, raja abushayathapadugathukundu, yappadiyadavari kaage engal aytapaduthum, devasamuthalanda ellamakla aashruthi thanpum, thudigana may meduthukulu, eswenaamathal vendiklaro.
Amen. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hallelujah.